I'd like to call the second meeting of month of January 2018 to order. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can everybody please rise? Trustee Arnett, you want to lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Trustee Arnett. Move on to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is for someone to come forward for an item that's not on the agenda this evening. If you have a question or concern you want to bring before the Village Board, going once, twice, three times, we'll move on. Item number four, approval of the minutes of the January 8th, 2018 meeting. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion to second. Any additions or corrections or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the aye seven motion carried. Move on to consent agenda. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion to second. The items on the consent agenda are: A, approval of the agenda; B, approval of the schedule of bills for January 15th, 2018, in the amount of $16,387,837.47; C, request board approval of an ordinance granting a special use to LGP Realty Holdings, LLC doing business as Marathon Gas Owner, 798 Barrington Road; D, request board approval of an ordinance granting amendment to a special use to Bright Hope International Owner, 2060 to 2080 Stonetown Avenue; E, request board approval of an ordinance rezoning a certain property in the Village of Hoffman Estates from B2, Community Business District to M1 Manufacturing District, this is Towway LLC and Stonegate; F, request board approval of an ordinance granting a special use to Somerville Christian Church Owner and Community Baptist Church of Velgrove applicant contract purchaser, 693 and 695 Illinois Boulevard; G, request board approval of an ordinance granting a special use to Sears Holdings Corp. Owner and Bright Horizons Family Solutions applicant tenant, 5334 Sears Parkway; H, request board approval of request by Hoffman Estates Park District for site plan approval for community garden plots at Chino Park; I, request board approval of request by Roarman Auto Group for special use extension for temporary vehicle storage at 125 West Higgins. J will do a motion to defer after we vote on A through I. Are there any questions on A through I from anybody? Anybody want anything pulled? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Five J's, request board approval of request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, commonly referred to as AT&amp;T, for an extension to existing cellular antenna license at 1355 West Berry Drive. The deferral is requested to the February 5th, 2018 Village Board meeting.
Motion to defer.
Motion to second. What's the reason for the deferral?
Mayor, as you know, the last board meeting was actually last week, so there was only five business days for them to get it routed through their corporate structure, so they asked to push to the next meeting.
Okay, well hopefully they'll get it done by then. There's a motion to second to defer. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the aye seven motion carried. Let's move on to President's Report. We have proclamation, Madam Clerk.
We do, and I have it. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Development Services Department has upon its roster an individual who should be committed for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profligate of this dedicated employee, and whereas the village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 25 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaims Saturday, February 3rd, 2018, as Kathy Rettelman Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all employees and citizens of the village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion to second. We appreciate the great job that Kathy's done for 25 years. Always has a smile on her face. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the aye seven motion carried. Mr. Copeland, give this to Kathy with our thanks.
(inaudible)
I believe that Chief Fortinato has some business to conduct there, Chief.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present three Citizen Life Saving Awards tonight. The first will be for Mr. Christopher Federman, and the second is for Kara Nicole Whelan. Both these individuals were involved in a near drowning incident that occurred on November 30th at Hoffman Estates High School in the morning. Kara was in the pool as part of a class. She noticed a student struggling. At that point, she was able to make contact with Mr. Federman. Both of them entered the pool, brought the student from the pool to the side deck where first aid was rendered until paramedics arrived and continued care and transport.
Great.
Mr. Federman, are you?
Whoops.
Another rescue.
Assistant you to the hospital.
The Citizen Life Savings Award is presented this 15th day of January 2018 to Kara Nicole Whelan, in recognition of your participation in the emergency medical service incident on November 30th, 2017, at 1100 West Higgins Road, for your willingness to go above and beyond in the act of rendering emergency assistance to a student during a near drowning Because of your selfless efforts, we recognize you for a positive outcome of a life saved. Thank you. Again, a Citizen Life Saving Award presented this 15th day of January 2018 to Mr. Christopher Federman, in recognition of your participation in the emergency medical service incident on November 30th, 2017, at 1100 West Higgins Road, for your willingness to go above and beyond in the act of rendering emergency assistance to a student during a near drowning incident at the school. Because of your selfless efforts, we recognize you for your positive outcome of a life saved.
Congratulations, well done.
Thank you very much.
Have you got a picture up here? Chief, why don't you come in too?
(inaudible).
Yep.
Everybody smile.
Thanks.
Good job.
Congratulations. (applause) Again, Mayor, we have one more recognition. This one is for Tyler Matusik. Tyler? (applause) So, on November 12th, 2017, approximately 8:30 at night, Tyler was exiting his home. He heard a neighbor calling for help. He looked, he saw the neighbor collapse in his driveway. Tyler went to him, realized he needed medical care, went to the neighbor's house, was able to get his wife to come out. Tyler activated the 911 system and then initiated CPR. Again, continued CPR until paramedics arrived. Care was continued, transported to the hospital, and at this point, the neighbor is still in care. They're now moving him to more of an acute care facility, but he is alive today because of Tyler's actions. Citizen Life Saving Award presented this 15th day of January 2018 to Tyler Matusik, in recognition of your participation in an emergency medical service incident on November 12th, 2017, at 3850 Barne Lane, for your willingness to go above and beyond in the act of rendering emergency assistance and CPR to a neighbor who had a critical medical event until emergency medical services arrived and continued care. Because of your selfless efforts, we recognize you for the positive outcome of a life saved. Congratulations. (applause) If I could, let's introduce, this is the victim's daughter.
We, as a family, just want to really, really say thank you and many, many blessings to Tyler, because you gave us our dad back. And without your swift actions, and you just didn't even think, and you just went for your heart, and you did everything you knew to react, and we all really, really appreciate you so much. Thank you. (applause)
We got to get a picture of Tyler.
One more, everybody smile.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate these three folks who went above and beyond the responsibilities to help people in need. We really appreciate it. It makes you proud to live in this town. I have one resignation today, and that's Mike Baker from the Disabled Commission.
Moved to accept with regret.
Second.
Is motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the aye seven motion carried. Do have a couple of letters I'm in receipt of. "Hi, just wanted to commend Renata, ASO, Zill Reserve Officer, for helping me out, December 29th, 2017. During the snowstorm, my car slid off the road and was towed to nearby collision center. Renata made time to help me find the correct towing company where my car was. I am extremely pleased with her going above and beyond to help me out. Please share this with her, and it makes me feel good to have people like Renata on your team. Sincerely." Also have another copy of a letter that was presented here. "The Hoffman Estates Fire Department Administration would like to thank all of the village departments and individuals that assisted with the hazardous materials response to the mobile gas station located at 615 West Higgins Road on January 11th, 2018. Without the interdepartmental cooperation that occurred between Fire, Public Works, Police, and Mr. Norris, the mobile gas station's hazardous material situation could not have been confined and mitigated as quickly and effectively as it was. Initial companies that responded to the scene recognized the severity and potential of the incident by ensuring that the pumps were shut down and the sewer system was immediately protected. The police department set up a perimeter around the station to prevent unauthorized individuals into the scene. Public Works was requested to the scene, and they immediately responded with sand to dike off the sewers and spread sand over the pavement to help in absorbing the gasoline. Public Works personnel also assisted Fire Department personnel with inspecting the entire sewer system, both up and downstream from the initial spill, and supplied traffic cones to block access to the hazard zone. The end result was that the health and safety of our village residents, village businesses, village personnel, and environment were all protected. Personnel from all the departments continue to assist the mobile station, allowing a member of our business community to get back in service before the end of the day. Thank you all for all your help." Great job, people. I thought that would be close for months. That's very nice. We have a couple of items coming up here. We've got the Choraleurs, which is a singing, acapella singing group. They'll be entertaining in the henry room in the back of the building here at Wednesday night at 7:00 PM. So, coming out, they're really good. They've finished, I believe, eighth or ninth in the world in worldwide competition. We also have Coffee with the Council this Saturday, January 20th, at 10:00 AM, right here in this room. And happy early birthday to Clerk Romanoff. Happy birthday. We did have a few things going on this past week. On Tuesday, the January 9th, I attended the Celtic Fest Commission meeting. The Celtic Fest will be in October this year. Will continue to be on the first Saturday of October in the future. On Tuesday, January 11th, Manager Norris and I attended the Mayor and Village Manager luncheon that Harper College put on, talking about their future plans. And Thursday evening, I attended the 4th of July Commission meeting, right here at Village Hall. I want to thank Trustee Anna Newell for attending the Northwest Suburban Joint Action and Water Agency Board Meeting in my stead. That was a special meeting, I really appreciate it. On Friday the 12th, I went to Congressman Rajah Krishna Murthy's open house, which is always a really good event. This morning, at the Village Hall, the Cultural Awareness Commission put on the Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast, which we do annually. This was the 16th year. Shout out to the whole management team for doing all the cooking, and the Commission for putting a great job on, and it was very nice, very, very moving. And this evening, we had a little celebration of Clerk Romanoff's birthday on the 24th of January, in case you're keeping track. And that's all.
Keep going, buy me something.
Yeah, want to buy something. So, this is like a, you know, 10-day birthday party we got going on here. Yeah. Move on to Trustee Cameras. We'll start with Trustee Arnett.
Thank you. The other thing I do have is I did attend the birthday dinner for Ms. Bev Romanoff, and wishing you very happy birthday wishes on the 24th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gata.
I thought you were going to go around the room. You caught me on that one. Monday, which was today, we attended the breakfast for the Martin Luther King Junior here at Village Hall. We had a great turnout, even though the weather wasn't too good. And also, the thank you to Pearl Henderson, who is the chairperson from the Cultural Awareness Commission, and her and her staff did an outstanding job. And then I also found out something today, that Mayor McLeod started MLK breakfast 16 years ago. So, thank you for starting this gathering. For a remarkable man, right? That's all I have. Oh, happy birthday to Bev.
Trustee Palafas.
I have some of the same. Happy birthday, Bev. Tonight, we had our Emerging Technology Commission meeting, so I wasn't able to join in on the dinner, but we can catch up some other way. We talked about doing some events this year. We're going to co-sponsor an Oracle user group meeting. We're going to do some things with drones. We're going to do a drone day later this fall, and then some stuff around cybersecurity, which is ever-present in the minds of many. I also wanted to thank the Cultural Awareness Commission for hosting another successful breakfast. It's fantastic every year, and Mayor, you're way ahead of your time by putting that together. It's one of the banner events I think we do throughout the year. That's all for me.
Thank you. Trustee Mills.
Also want to congratulate the Cultural Awareness Committee for a great job, and staff, you did a good job, department heads, everybody seemed to enjoy their breakfast this morning, so thanks for coming in early and doing all that. On January 12th, I attended the Chamber's Celebrations of Excellence Committee meeting. That event will be coming up a week from Thursday, and I think they still have tickets available, too. Should be a great night. Happy birthday to Bev, ahead of time. And I want to extend thanks and congratulations again to our three Life Saving Award participants, especially the two younger people. It's wonderful to see you getting involved, and it's great to see the support you have here in the audience tonight, too. Keep it up, you'll do great in life. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Trustee Newell.
Okay. On the 9th, attended the Sustainability Meeting, and then on the 11th, as you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the Jawa Meeting. Sorry, I couldn't attend the MLK Breakfast, but have heard a lot of great comments, so good job to everyone. Congrats to all the Life Saving Award recipients. It's just so wonderful to have so many caring young citizens here and stepping up to the plate. Nice job also. I have to throw this out there to Public Works for keeping our streets nice and clean during this messy weather. And last but not least, happy birthday, Bev.
Thank you.
Trustee Stanton.
Bev, I won't make you last. Happy birthday early. (laughing) I was able to attend the Martin Luther King Breakfast this morning, and I want to thank the Cultural Awareness Commission as well, and also our staff and department heads for putting on a great breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to 6C, Village Managers' Report.
Just one thing to congratulate Clerk Romanoff on becoming the same age as me, even though it's only for about another 45 days. Then I'll be a year older again. That's it, Mayor.
Maybe I can do a proclamation or something.
(laughing) On Jim's birthday?
Move on to 6D, Village Clerks' Report.
Thank you for all the birthday wishes. Again, January 24th, in case anybody forgot. I'm here most of the time, so go right around the corner, give me presents, flowers, candies, cookies, anything. Thank you.
She's really not talking to the people in the audience that are residents. She's talking to those of us that work with her.
But if you want to, you know, we're finding you.
That's right.
All contributions would be accepted, right, Bev? Okay. Move on to 6E, Treasurers' Report. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
A second. There's a motion to second to accept the Treasurers' Report. Any questions on this? Anything you want to add?
Anything to add?
Finance Director, okay. Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to Committee Reports, Public Health and Safety. Trustee Gata.
Okay. Public Health and Safety Committee will call their meeting to order on January 22nd, 2018. We will have a roll call, approval of the minutes of December 11th, 2017, and then under new business, we have six items. Number one, request authorization to waive bidding and purchase a 2018 Ford Utility Police Interceptor, AWD, for the Fire Department through the Northwest Municipal Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Contract from Kerry Motors Frankfurt Incorporated, Frankfurt, Illinois, in the amount of $31,074. Number two, request authorization to award contract for entry-level patrol officer testing to COPS and FIR personnel testing service, Schomburg Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $17,200. And number three, request acceptance of the Police Department monthly report. And four, request acceptance of the Health and Human Services monthly report. Five, request acceptance of Emergency Management Quarterly Monthly Report. And the number six, request acceptance of the Fire Department monthly report. And three, we'll have a President's Report. If there's anything in other items in review, and we will have an adjournment.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Trustee Palafas.
Yes, sir. Immediately following Public Health and Safety, we'll have a roll call to establish quorum of approval of the minutes from the December 11th, 2017 meeting. It should be a fast meeting with four items in new business. The first is request approval to amend the Sunderland House Rental and Use Policy, Application for Use Form and Indemnity Hold Harmless Agreement. Number two is a request acceptance of Finance Department monthly report for the November and December months. Item number three is request acceptance of Information System Department monthly report. Item four is a request acceptance of the Sears Center monthly report for December and January. If need be, another President's Report. And if there's anything in other, no items in review, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you. Public Works and Utilities, Trustee Newell.
Okay, immediately following the Finance Committee on the 22nd, we'll have the roll call for the Public Works and Utility Committee. We'll have the approval of minutes from December 11th, 2017. And under new business, we have six items. Item number one is request approval of change order number one to the contract with Boulder Contractors of Kerry, Illinois, for the West Berkeley Lane Storm Sewer Replacement Project in an amount of $57,225, for a total not to exceed $564,185. Number two, request approval of change order number one to the contract with Lorick Construction Company of Displanes, Illinois, for the Hoffman Boulevard Over Canadian National Railroad Superstructure Repairs Project in an amount of $30,205, for a total not to exceed $292,734. Number three is request authorization to extend the 2016 contract for 2018 Brevo hosting fees for village facilities to Sound Incorporated out of Naperville, Illinois, which is the low bid, at a cost not to exceed $21,937.32. Number four is request authorization to waive bidding and purchase Neptune Meters from Water Resources, Inc., out of Elgin, Illinois, which is the sole supplier, at 2018 unit prices in an amount not to exceed $215,000. Item number five is request acceptance of the Department of Public Works monthly report. Item number six is request of the acceptance of the Department of Development Services monthly engineering report of the Transportation and Engineering Division. If there's anything additional to add to the President's Report, nothing under other items in review, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Newell. Move on to Planning and zoning Commission Report. A, request by Towway LLC owner, Stonegate Properties Inc., applicant in the Hoffman Estates Park District applicant, for special use.
Microphone. Turn yours on.
Okay. Start over again. Request by Towway LLC owner, Stonegate Properties Inc., applicant, and the Hoffman Estates Park District applicant, for special use and variation to emit four billboard signs to be flag-shaped and cantilevered over the adjacent Nikor property to the north, at the property located at the terminus of Pembroke Avenue, commonly referred to as 2205 through 2295 Pembroke Avenue, with nine conditions. This item was deferred from the January 8th meeting. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
A second. There's a motion to second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of discussion, can you? Oh, Trustee Mills.
In this report we received, there was some concern about, there was some mention of keeping, of changing this condition number nine, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We indicated that if we wanted to keep it, it should be amended, which allows the transferability. So, it would be changed to read, "The rights granted by this special use and variation shall be transferable to successors and the signs of the lessor, provided all conditions of the approval shall remain in effect in the circumstances which were present at the time of the public hearing and were used as a basis for approval of this ordinance remain the same." So if the board wants to include that, there needs to be a motion to amend.
Yes, the motion, as presented, would not change nine. So what's the?
So then, we'll amend the motion to include the last?
Condition number nine.
Commission number nine.
Is that okay with the second?
Second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion to second as amended?
I have a question.
Yes.
The Park District only needs, is using one billboard, right? And that's the reason why we're doing this in the first place?
That's it.
So, do we want to extend it for all four signs, or just for one sign on the property?
That's an interesting question. Mr. Norris.
When you say that's why we're doing this, are you talking about condition nine, or are you talking about the request of the extension for the special use?
The sense that it would stay with the land versus the owner.
Okay, so the owner requested, the owner requested that the special use be extended. The Park District then said, if you're requesting it, since all signs are part of it, we made the Park District join on, because they have the lease with Nikor for the air rights. So the billboards right now are on land, but because they're over Nikor's easement, one of the parties has to have the air rights lease from Nikor. The Park District has that. So this is really a joint application of the Park District and the owner. The original ordinance will The original ordinance, well, the 2007 ordinance did allow this, the special use, to the owner, not to the property.
Okay.
Okay? So what the request was to allow that continue as is. So that's what the request is. Now, the board has the ability to split it up, but the owner technically owns all four. The Park District does not own number four.
Okay.
They just have an agreement with the owner for that and they have, and they have the leverage because they have the lease with, for the air rights.
All right, understood.
It's a complicated issue.
Yeah, definitely.
I have the same question.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Why do all, why do all four of them? Trustee Palafas.
Did I miss the answer? Or?
No, there was no answer.
Yeah. I mean, you explained, you explained what it is and why, but.
Okay. The board can do what the board wants to do. I'm not sure how you bifurcate the four when they're all on by the same party. So that would be something that I would suggest legal looks into if there's a preference to potentially do that, because I'm not sure how we accomplish that.
Mr. Corporation Counsel.
Right now, the issue is that we have all four signs that are covered by this extension, I understand. And the issue comes up if we're only worried about the sign that involves the Park District, whether we can bifurcate those two issues. I would think we can. I think the village can, but, you know, I'd have to look into the specifics.
Could I interject?
Sure.
The reason they had asked for the extended period of time was they said it had to do with the bank financing requiring it.
Why does this agreement expire? The current agreement.
I think it doesn't expire for a while yet.
2021.
2022, it says here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, I don't understand why we have to do this now. It's four years away.
Good evening, Mayor McLeod, Village Trustees.
Give us your name and address, this is the record.
Craig Dollsman, Deputy Director of the Hoffman Estates Park District, 4476 Sundance Circle, Hoffman Estates, Illinois. The current agreement does expire in 2022. We currently have an agreement with the Chicago Wolves and this does date back to 2007 when the first agreement was reached. At that time, we were lucky enough to partner with not only the Village of Hoffman Estates, but representative from the state legislature, as well as Stonegate and Toway LLC. The Chicago Wolves insisted to be part of the billboard signs that were currently on I-90. They want the one, the fourth sign for advertising purposes for the Chicago Wolves. And that was kind of the requirement that we had to obtain in order to reach an agreement with them leasing property at the Trepont Center Ice Arena, which is now, as you can see on the sign, home of the Chicago Wolves. The reason we were looking for.
It's nothing you said, Craig.
One of the reasons we were looking for the early extension is that our contract with the Chicago Wolves is up in May of 2020, with notice being required in late 2019. So we anticipate that we will enter negotiations with the Chicago Wolves, which currently have their administrative offices, as well as their practice rink and their locker rooms at the Trepont Center Ice Arena. So we anticipate negotiating with them in 2018. If we don't have the fourth billboard sign, we feel that we will probably be at a great loss of securing them as our tenants for hopefully, again, the next 15 to 20 years. The reason we have the fourth sign is that all four signs are actually owned by Stonegate or Toway LLC. And because of the way it worked out with the cooperation of the village and the cooperation of the state legislature, those four signs are actually leased to us as a governmental entity, allowing them to be within the distance it is of I-90. By doing that, we receive the fourth sign, they get the other three signs, they don't charge us for the fourth sign. So if it was only for the fourth sign, they might not be in the greatest hurry to allow us to have the fourth sign if they don't have the other three signs. The Park District was responsible for the construction of all four signs. They are new signs, but it's really an integral operation that three signs for them, one sign for us, and that's what's important in securing the Wolves hopefully remaining in Hoffman Estates for a considerable time in the future.
So did you say the Park District paid for those signs?
We paid for the construction of the signs and as.
All four of them.
Because we had to build new ones in order to make the spacing correct of all four signs within the property that could be utilized for the billboard advertising. As Village Manager Norris pointed out, we also paid for the Nikor air rights. So the Nikor air rights, which are a continual perpetual agreement on an annual basis, is in the Park District's name. So that's why it is very entwined between all four signs and then the one sign that we have. And that's why we did the request for the extension. It's really in hopes that we can secure a continued lease with the Chicago Wolves at the Trepont Center Ice Arena.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody? Trustee Palafas.
So is it safe to assume that the judge needs a couple of weeks to review all four? It won't hurt you if it's a couple of weeks from now, if we did all, the approval of all four?
Oh, as far as the renewal, I mean, yeah, the timing of the renewal right now is not imminent.
It's not critical.
Right. It'll probably be sometime this year that we begin negotiations in regards to the Chicago Wolves' extension of their lease.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Mills.
Is the 25-year window the only thing they're going to look at, that they'll only be willing to look at, you know? I mean, that's, I think, what a lot of question is, too.
Yeah, I know you, I believe you asked that before, Trustee Mills. One of the reasons honestly that we chose that time is there's also, as an added caveat, there's state permits that have been issued on those billboard signs. Those state permits expire in 2042. So originally, we started doing this and it was 15 and we're going to do 2037 and we said, honestly, I haven't, this just makes sense, let's just request at the same point in time so that we know if the village is willing to grant the extension, everything would expire in 2042.
Okay, that's where we were trying to get from, is where all these numbers came from.
Yeah, the 2042 was to mirror the state permit extension date.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? See nothing else? Pull the board, Madam Clerk.
So we're going to approve this with condition number nine, or are we going to defer it?
Right. That's the motion so far, yeah.
That's what the motion is so far.
Okay.
Hasn't been a motion to defer yet.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gada.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you very much. Move on to A, we have two items of additional business. Eight, A, request board approval of an ordinance amending section 6-2-1-HE-11-1313, permit parking of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code Alcoa Lane. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
It's a motion to second. A discussion on this item. Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gada.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. And B is request board approval of a request by, how do you pronounce this name, Mr. Gugliotta? You've had more dealings with them than I have.
Well, that doesn't mean I've pronounced the name, but I will try. Anita J.
Anita J?
Yes.
Anita J Hotel Corporation for special use and site plan amendment to extend the deadlines for completion of exterior work at Country Inn and Suites. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any questions? Assuming, what if they don't do this? I mean, they haven't exactly been stellar in getting stuff done over there. So what's the alternative?
Well, our typical procedure, if they don't follow through, is citations. I think the first deadline's involved simple site work that they've, they've actually started at the end of the year, right before the weather broke, so we're fairly confident about that. The brick work, I, you know, that deadline would be a little bit farther out. We would have to look at other, other legal action besides citations.
It's always stunning when people start doing outside cement work and things at the end of November and then winter comes. I mean, doesn't this happen every year?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Winter happens every year.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Norris.
One thing is that the 2019 condition to the exterior brickwork is not only our condition, it's actually the flags condition. So they would lose the Country Inn and Suites flag if they don't meet that deadline. That's their requirement as well, unless they're able to negotiate another extension, obviously.
Well, they'll be back in here getting another extension, too.
They sure would.
Anything else from anybody? See nothing, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gada.
No.
Mayor McLeod.
No. Move on to eight, adjournment to executive session for what reason, Trustee Mills?
I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn into executive session for the purpose of litigation, five ILCS 120/2C11.
So moved.
A second. Motion to second.